Good evening. I hereby call the meeting of the Brockton City Council's Ordinance Committee for Thursday, September 25, 2025. It is 5:10 p.m. to order. The ordinance committee is made up of Counselor Farwell, Counselor Texara, Counselor Rodriguez, and myself, Counselor Azak. We can, as soon as you're ready, Madam Clerk, you can read item number one.
Item number one, ordinance, an ordinance to reestablish the R5 Senior Residential Community Zone to Section 27-4 Designations of Zone of the Brockton City Ordinance and to amend Section 27-27.6 R5 Senior Residential Community invited to attend Attorney James Burke, Law Office of James M. Burke, Rob May, Director of Economic Planning and Development.
I did hear from Director May that he was not able to attend this evening's meeting, and Attorney Burke is out of, I believe, out of state. So we have in the audience Counselor Thompson and Counselor Castro. And I believe Counselor Thompson, you wanted to speak on this matter?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the ordinance committee. Counselor Jeff Thompson, Ward 5 City Councilor, co-sponsor of the Senior Residential Ordinance. Counselors, working with all of you over the last nine months of discussion of the Senior Residential Ordinance, working with the planning department, developers, Attorney Burke, and feedback from the community, I've made some amendments to the existing Senior Residential Ordinance. And at the end of this discussion, I'm going to ask that that ordinance be introduced by motion. But right now, I just want to discuss the ordinance itself. So this ordinance, I believe, meets this committee's goals of providing age-restricted housing for our senior population. It reduces the hardship seniors face in home ownership and allows seniors to age in place in the city of Brockton, close to their family, their doctors, and their social networks. This ordinance also provides community space and recreational activities for our seniors for their mental and physical health. The ordinance before us addresses a multitude of zoning matters, including the types of residences to be built, which include apartments, single-family residences, and townhouses. This ordinance addresses acreage requirements, general building requirements, traffic control, open space requirements, height restrictions, and parking requirements, along with amenity requirements. Additionally, the proposed ordinance, and I think most importantly, removes the multifamily housing supplement that was in the former ordinance. Now, that multifamily housing supplement was not part of our originally submitted ordinance, and it really became a point of contention in the passage of this ordinance. And so as a co-sponsor, it was important to me that we keep our eyes on the prize, and that's to develop senior residential zone in Brockton. And I believe that the removal of the multifamily supplement makes this a better ordinance. And lastly, the amended ordinance creates a base zone, senior residential zone, and eliminates a citywide overlay district. And what that does is allows for better planning and certainty in our city. I wholly support the amended Senior Residential Ordinance, and I urge you to vote favorably on this matter. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them regarding the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions for Counselor Thompson, Counselors?
Let me hear from Counselor.
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, should we have the amendments first so that we are voting on the full package, or do you want to?
Okay, we're going to leave them till the end, but that's fine. Would you rather?
Either way, I don't care.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it would be at the will. I know Counselor Nakastro would like to speak on this. But essentially, through our nine months of discussion, this Senior Residential Ordinance, you know, has taken different forms. And, you know, what I believe this ordinance before you kind of takes in the best of all worlds on all the different versions of senior residential we discussed. Now, the original ordinance was originally drafted as a base zone that basically reinstituted our current R5 zone that was essentially stricken. During this amendment process or debate, additional planning developments or planning requirements were discussed and added to this ordinance. And a lot of that was some of the things that I spoke about, building height requirements, the types of buildings, acreage requirements, traffic patterns, you know, traffic control, you know, amenities, right? That we had specific amenities and community space, open green space. So these were some of the things that were added to our original R5 zone. That made it more understandable and more specific to what we would like to see in our senior residential zones. One last addition that this Senior Residential Ordinance undertakes is that the R5 zone incorporates the R1 zone as well. And so think of it as a R1 overlay, right? So the existing, underlying R1 zone is incorporated into this R5 zone. And so I think that was part of our original R5 ordinance, and that's something that's found in a lot of our other zoning ordinances where it incorporates lower-level zoning. And so that's what we have. I think this is a good ordinance that was developed through months of discussion. I think, again, it takes in account the best of both worlds, of the overlay district and the underlying base zone. And I believe it's in the best interests of Brockton, especially removing the multifamily aspect of it. We, you know, we listen to feedback, right? And that was an issue that a lot of our residents had, that Counselor Nakastro had, that our planning department had. And so in order to keep our eye on the prize of developing a senior residential zone for our seniors in Brockton, we removed that contentious issue, and we're ready to move forward with the ordinance without it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Madam Chair, may I ask some legal questions before we discuss?
Sure. Regarding what was stated by Counselor, okay.
Yes. Well, regarding the ordinance that's before us, because I just want to make sure I understand this. So the Legislative Council, if you look at 27-27.6 subsection B, that would seem to say that hypothetically, if a 60-year-old man married a 45-year-old woman, and that woman happened to have a minor child aged 13 or 14, the only way more than one person under the age of 55 could live there would be by vote, a majority vote of a homeowner's or tenants' association management board, which would seem to mean that this ordinance would mandate you'd have to have one of those boards in order to accommodate that provision. Now, I'm not trying to get too technical, but we do have sometimes marriages that are involving people who are older, people who are younger, and people involving minor children. Am I reading this right? And if I am, should that stand legally? Because it seems a bit restrictive.
So yes, you're reading it correctly. That is actually language that is already in your R5 that's existing. So that's not new language that came through this proposal. That was already there. Yes, these, throughout the ordinance, an HOA is given certain rights in voting. It's, I think that's just how they are established, to be able to meet the 55 age requirements.
All right. So I, and it may very well be existing. And by the way, I don't have a problem with changing this to a senior housing complex. But the question is, should we retain that language? Because society has changed. I mean, when that original R5 ordinance went through, it might not be commonplace to have people who are older with younger spouses and minor children. And I just throw that open here to discussion because there is a homeowners' association up in Counselor Lally's ward, and unfortunately, those poor people who are part of that homeowners' association are having nothing but trouble. And I almost hate to mandate that we would have homeowners or management boards voting on these highly personal issues. So I just want to put that into the record, and we can discuss it in a minute. Because my next question is that, given what Counselor Thompson said, Legislative Council, we are taking this ordinance and we're superimposing it over every R1 district?
No. No, no, no. So any property that is designated as R5 will also be able to have the benefit of R1.
Okay. So the parcels that we've identified, for example, tonight, will also correspondingly have the benefits of R1, even though they've been identified in this R5?
Correct. Unless you get designated by R5, you don't get to be an R5. And if you do get designated as R5, you get the benefit of the R1 zoning as well.
Okay.
It is very similar to an overlay.
Okay.
I was talking with Counselor Thompson before. I think back when this was first put in as an R5 zone, I think it was intended to be an overlay over R1. I just don't think that that is how it was drafted. It was set up as a base zone.
Okay.
Presumably, you could just have standalone R5, but I don't know if you have a community that has that need.
All right. So we don't have to hold things up tonight. If this is voted unfavorably, it will go forward, and we still have an opportunity to look into things like older spouse, younger spouse, minor children. Because I think it's important not to be too restrictive in today's day and age with requirements for people's lifestyle. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor. Counselors, any other questions? Counselor Nakastro?
Thank you. Good evening to the committee. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm really glad we're doing this, but there's a lot of changes. Look at all these different versions we've had since January. And so Legislative Council is willing to give us the nickel explanation of all this, and I urge you to go along with that, and let's listen to it. Because what we started with varied dramatically in May and April, and now we're back closer to that. And I think it's really important that you all understand, it's just been so many versions and so much reading, and we're all so busy. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, perhaps in Ward 6, you're seeing the worst-case scenario of a homeowners' association. In my professional career, I've seen many, many homeowners' associations, subdivisions as well as condominiums, especially condominiums, do the right thing and be very flexible. And I do think, I do think most of them really do try, you know, the people who step up to be part of the homeowners' association, try to do the right thing, given the circumstances. And I think you have to let them be little mini-governments within reason, knowing that all of the owners and the occupants have, they're all legal rights in any event. So I think, I think the language is okay, you know, absent a problem in the future. I think it's okay. I think we can trust it, at least at this point. And the last thing I would like to say is, we've had some, since our May meeting, actually since our August meeting, we've had emails and such from the planning director, Rob May. And he urges us to take a step back and do a study, and do a citywide study. And I think at least one of you will address that as part of remarks tonight. I think the compromise position would be to review this, and if it's amenable, if you're all amenable to it, you know, recommend it favorably and go forward tonight. But with an eye toward, we should do a study. We should know the needs of our seniors. We're assuming that we know, we're probably right, at least some of us, but we should study our seniors and what their needs and desires are, as well as every other segment of our population. So I want to keep in mind the need for that study, that we don't lose it by pushing this forward, and away we go. And I will keep bringing up a study as well of our seniors. Unless you have questions for me, that's all I have to say.
Counselors, any questions for Counselor Nakastro? Counselor Rodriguez?
No, just a comment. And I agree with you, Madam colleague from Ward 4, my Ward. Because I think we can do both. You know, we can kind of move this stuff forward and champion a study to make sure that we understand exactly what the needs of the senior population is. I mean, when you look at it, it's over 55, which is basically, perhaps, other than Thompson, in a sense, most of us.
And Legislative Council.
That one too. You know, most of us are over 55. So I think we're getting, as my daughter once told me, I'm closer to the grave than I am to the crib.
It's a great feeling, huh?
I know. I think it's important for us to kind of put things in that would actually benefit the population as we are getting older in this community.
That's right.
But I think we can do, we can do both. We can move this thing forward, especially since we have some folks who are interested and willing to develop and invest in our community. So we get that stuff moving forward, and at the same time, champion that study that, as long as it doesn't cost a ton of money, because you know how things are and could be, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to do both.
Well, I think that's something that we can explore in the time between now and the council meeting that this might appear on the agenda for. So we have a sense of what it would cost, who would pay for it, how long it would take, and we can report back to everyone.
Yeah. And if need be, we can tweak this one way or the other. I mean, that's what the ordinances are for, and that's what this committee is for, to kind of tweak things as we go along. Because, I mean, I often say that if you look at the Constitution, you know, it's supposed to be this perfect document, but it's been amended 27 times.
Yeah, it's a living, breathing document.
So we can amend whatever we need to, to benefit, you know, the folks in our community.
That's right. And this is a growing segment of our population. The census of 2020 told us that. Right. Us too. Us too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So Attorney Resnick, do you want to read the?
Yeah. So the best way for me to explain this is if you guys look at the, what I'm calling the as amended version, which is the version that came out of your last meeting. And I can just basically describe to you which sections are being changed.
So this is what we received, correct?
Correct. Yeah. And so we're going to make sure that the title is as a senior residential community, so any reference to an overlay district is going to stay the same. The language on purpose is just going to, is just going to start where it says, the purpose of this section is to promote alternative housing. And it's going to continue until it says utilization of land in harmony with neighboring properties. In the occupancy and qualifications, they're adding in tenant associations, I think just because some of these units, if they're rented, would be run by a tenant's association as opposed to if they're owned, it'd be a homeowners' association. So I think that was just to have more inclusive language. Same with including association later on in that paragraph. Under general requirements, additional language is going to be added so that it says, consistent of apartments, single-family residences. It's going to include detached and semi-detached units. I think that's just to have consistent language that we have in our ordinances now that we see different constructions of family homes. It's going to keep the language that says that the planning board shall have the authority to grant relief from the requirements of this ordinance upon a finding that such relief promotes the development of essential housing in the city of Brockton.
The planning, but not zoning?
This is, you can all choose how it's going to be. This is, that language was added in, I believe, during discussions between Rob May and Attorney Burke. The switch to planning board, that happened on the Fairgrounds overlay district as well. That one, special permits go to planning. You can do ZBA. You're going to be talking about presumably only three parcels if you guys pass the next one. That's discretionary. That's up to the council where they want to see variations from this to go. So again, section F is going to include language that it is rented. So for site requirements under open space.
Sorry, Attorney Resnick, so what part, if say we wanted to amend it to zoning as well, where would we include that?
If you'd want it to go to zoning board, there are a couple of times in this document that talks about planning board. So you'd want to take away planning board uses and replace them with zoning board.
Okay. So we can make that amendment to?
Yeah. If you want me to, we can stop here, and I just, what I'd like to do for my ease.
Sure.
You don't have a motion in front of you.
Okay.
So.
So we can come back to it?
Yeah. Instead of like making any motions or anything like that, you guys can have, have your debate. I'll pause here. But just, we could wait for motions until the end, because you don't have anything before you.
Okay.
And just quickly, I believe that the reason that these matters are now kind of making their way over to the planning board instead of the zoning board is because the planning board has, you know, review throughout the whole development of the project through site plan review and other engineering reviews throughout the process, lot, lot, lot releases, and, you know, all the different kind of more minute building processes that are often reviewed by the planning board. So I think that's why this special permit would move more over to the planning board, because they're more involved in the construction aspect of developments. You put it over to the zoning board, a lot of times, it's a first-time look for them. They're not, they're not part of the overall site plan review process, the engineering process, and all of that. So the planning has more of a, more control and more overview of these types of developments than somebody coming, you know, than somebody coming before the zoning board, who really is, are having a discussion regarding hardship, you know, why does this not fit under the existing ordinance? Which is a different discussion than, as we are building this project, we found this issue that we're, you know, that we need some relief on to continue building, right? Whether it be the land, whether it be other issues that come up in building, the engineering of things. And so I think that's why, that's where we have moved some of these issues, as we did in the Fairgrounds, over to planning board review.
So Counselor, you feel that this should stay with planning?
I believe, my opinion would be that it would stay with planning because of their overall, because of the planning process with site plan reviews and the engineering of views and all of that, that they're a little more intimately involved in a development than somebody who already has maybe something existing and wants to say, hey, I need, there's a hardship that I need to overcome what's existing. This is kind of more, let's take a, you know, a little bit of alteration in the existing process.
Okay.
That's just why I believe it's now planning board reviews on these.
Thank you. Counselor Farwell?
Just very quickly, I think my preference is for zoning. It's, to me, it's a stronger board, and what I like about zoning is the fire chief is on it. And I think having that level of review and analysis by the fire chief, public safety expert, and currently, we're fortunate enough to have a retired fire chief as the chair, I just see that board as having a great deal of insight into what is the most appropriate use for a special permit, and how does it integrate itself into the public safety factor. So at the end of the discussion, I do hope there's a motion to strike out planning board and insert zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Thank you. So you agree, Counselor?
That's what I wanted to say.
Any other comments on this? No? Oh, Counselor Nakastro?
In most other situations, I would agree with Counselor Farwell. But the zoning board is, and I've sat on both the zoning and the planning board, the zoning board is concerned with use, okay? And less with details, in some instances, details. But the thing about zoning versus planning is, a lot of the details that will come up with this, they will require developing over time and maybe continuing over a couple of meetings. And our zoning board has a policy of acting on everything on the same night that it comes before them. And that's not in the nature of what we're doing here. And that's why I think it is more appropriate to go to planning, so that they have the ability to not just deny it because it's not ready for approval, which is what would happen at zoning, and then have to, you know, go, then it's kind of an arduous process to get back in front of zoning again. In this way, planning can postpone it to the next meeting, and they can continue developing the issues. It's actually more efficient for the project, and also for the city, I think, to have it go to planning.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor?
Just in response to Counselor Nakastro, it's been my experience that the planning board has been too much under the direction control of the planning office, and they really haven't been as independent as I would like to see them. In a perfect world, you would have planning board members perhaps with a wide variance of experience in different issues. I'm trying to, in a delicate way, I'm trying to say that if you take the body of work done by the planning board, have they articulated the best interests of the city in so many different projects? Or have they kind of just gone along with what the developer wanted and passed it on? And I will say about the ZBA, you have someone on the ZBA who also sits on the traffic commission and who also sits on the planning board. So you're kind of blending three different points of view, at least on one member of the ZBA, whereas the planning board, you don't have that added expertise. So that's just my thinking.
Yes. And I know where you're coming from, and I concur in many ways. But you're talking personalities and persons and competence. You're not talking about what is the best board to make these decisions, given that decisions sometimes evolve over time. We can, we can affect the personalities and the qualifications of the people on the boards by nominating more qualified people. But that's not the purpose of this ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is to kind of take a blind eye to each of those boards and decide where does this best belong, based on what these boards do. And I do think a better place for it is planning.
And I respect the Counselor's point of view. You're right. The only thing I have to go on is the observations.
Of course. Of course.
And I, I'm a little bit reluctant to just see the continuum. And planning board members are appointed for five years.
That's right.
So you, if you put someone on the planning board, they're there sometimes through two and a half mayoral terms, whereas the ZBA, you're there for three years.
And, and planning board is hard, and I was glad I was on in five years, because really, with all my professional background and experience, I was a good two years figuring out what was going on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I'd say I agree with both of you, and I've attended many of the meetings, and I think we need to, I think with the ordinance, we need to, it needs to go in the direction of the planning board, but maybe we need to work on updating maybe the ordinance that falls, that zoning falls under, maybe make some changes there, so, and planning. But I agree with you. Well, I mean, you know, I'm a bit torn. I agree with both of you. Okay, so we'll have Attorney Resnick continue?
Yep. So then, for open space requirements, just so that you can see what the difference is between what the original submission was and then what was eventually as amended, that was a change on the open space shall equal not less than 50% of the total parcel area. And adding in language that access roads, dwelling unit sidewalks, and the like are not open space, any yard or other area held that has exclusive use shall not be considered open space. Under building and dwelling unit requirements, it's going to include detached single units for what's allowed. They will allow two stories for semi-detached and three stories for apartment-style buildings, with the housing having the primary bedroom on the ground level. with the housing having the primary bedroom on the ground level for single and detached units. The remaining next couple of sections is staying the same from what was originally submitted, except when you get to parking, the original submission looked for two parking spaces for each dwelling unit. This is now one and a half parking per unit.
So who drives a half a car?
Well, so like you might drive half a, you might drive two cars, but I drive-
One.
One. And then-
Somebody's going to eventually have to get a half a car.
Or, if I'm a senior, I don't drive. I don't have a car. So my number helps those units that have three cars, bring it down.
I just think it's nonsense sometimes when we put these things down.
Completely do, but it's how you count your parking spaces.
Yeah.
Then, under Section Six, from what the original submission is and what you're seeing, will stay as the language. And this, I believe, is language that the planner would have more information on, because there's just a lot of changes here that seem to be specific about the location of driveways and sidewalks, and what that looks like, but whether or not the street's parallel with travel lanes, that language is changing a little bit. And there's deleting language for parcels no less than 10 acres. So the multi-family language that you see there is being deleted. And then the remaining sections pretty much stay the same, which is what you already had in your ordinances to begin with.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions?
Madam Chair, just picking up on Councilor Castro's comments, if we follow our ordinances, then I would agree with her. The ordinance that we passed in 2016 indicates that one member of the board, planning board, shall have a minimum of two years of experience in real estate, land development, civil engineering, zoning law, building construction, architectural plans, and thereafter, one member shall have at least two years of experience in the area of subdivision control under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 41. So if we make the right appointments, it works. If we don't, the city suffers, which is true of any board or commission. So maybe if we follow our ordinances, we will be all right. And if we're not, then people who are in charge can make an amendment.
I think, I believe that's the best way to go, is to pass and the work on amending it if it's not working, if we see that it's not working.
I have a question for-
Counselor Rodriguez? Yeah, sure.
Shannon, within the ZBA, can we, can we amend the ZBA in terms of, because I agree with what Counselor Castro was saying in terms of a member coming in front of the ZBA and the ZBA making that decision, yea or nay, on that same night? Is there any language that we can add to the ZBA functionality that actually says you can actually postpone something until the next meeting?
I can look at that. The ZBA language is, their standards are set by state law.
Right.
I can look at that. I have no reason to believe that they wouldn't be able to postpone a matter for a matter that wasn't-
Right, because I think that would answer some of the questions that the Counselor had in terms of something that comes in, you know, fresh out of the, you know, out of the grill, in a sense, and then it comes to the board and the board has the option of either, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down. But if they had the option of saying, "You know what, we're going to hold this off until our next meeting to give us a chance to kind of work through this," then a lot of these things would be answered, as we had spoken about. Because I do agree with, you know, I mean, perhaps even changing the planning to put in some public safety people in there as well, that actually has the ability to kind of control some of the things that happens in the city as well, I think would make sense.
The only thing that I will say is that Counselor Castro was correct about what the purpose of the ZBA is supposed to do, like you're looking for like use experiences. This is a very specific use. The use here is senior residential. You have to be, but that's the actual use. All of the specifics, parking, building, all of that, are definitely more designed development standards, which your trend has definitely been to put those in front of the planning. I can't comment on what the makeup of your boards are, because frankly, I have no idea who's on either board. But in theory, I think the changes that a developer would be looking for a compromise on are design-based, not use-based, because you can only use this property for senior residential.
Right, but when you're talking about parking spaces for instance, you know, that infringes on public safety, you know, where, you know, how does a fire truck get into a parking lot if you are, if the whole place is taken up with small lanes, big lanes, little lanes, or whatever that might be? It will affect the quality of life and the folks that we're dealing with. And that's why, you know, we're sitting here putting together a zoning change. We're changing the zoning, you know, or creating a new zoning, an overlay, which is zoning. And in reality, we should actually have zoning have a nay or, a yea or nay response towards it, in the sense to make the rest of us feel, because once we, once we do these ordinances, we push them out, we don't see them again unless we come in as a guest speaker for when it comes in front of us, in front of the committees. So this is why I'm saying that we got to look into, we might not be able to do it tonight, but we might have to look into, you know, perhaps changing the planning board, adding some folks in there from the public safety, you know, side of things as well. And then do the same thing with zoning, to say, you have the freedom to be able to say, you know, "We're going to postpone this matter until next meeting so that the people don't have to go through the whole reapplication process." But it would actually facilitate the discussion so that we can make the, you know, the educated choices that we need to make.
May I add a point of information?
Counselor Castro?
Thank you. And those are, those are very good points. Just some more information for you. The one-night rule, it's a rule of our zoning board. It's not an ordinance and it's not a state law. And the rule was created by Attorney Anthony Ionas, who was the prior chair of the ZBA, and I did serve with him. And he was a professor at Suffolk, and he really knew this stuff cold. And his feeling was that the work should be done all in the same night, and it benefits the city as well as the applicants. So that's the first thing, the one rule, it's their rule. And the second, the second point I had, and it might have just floated out of my head, what's the last thing you said, Councilor Rodriguez?
No, to basically position people in the planning board that actually has some public safety experience-
Yes.
Since they are designing, or they're allowing certain projects to take place in the city, that they need to take public safety into consideration when we're dealing with this.
And that's, that's right, and that's very important. And they finally recognized that. And about two years ago, they started having a senior member of the fire department sit in on their meetings, and they're asked to weigh in before the planning board actually takes a vote. And it was Deputy Chief Williams before he retired. And I think Brendan Weeks sits in now on their behalf.
But isn't that through site review or actually planning, planning?
They go to both.
Yeah, both.
Because I know he's at site review, because I was there.
No, they go to the planning board meetings as well, yes.
But is that in official, in an official capacity through the ordinances and stuff, or just something that they're doing on their own?
It is not through the ordinances, but it makes a lot of sense and it saves, it avoids a lot of problems, yes. I think it adds value, and it seems like when they do weigh in, because I go to their meetings a lot, they're on Zoom right now, when they do weigh in, it seems like the planning board does take note. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
We all set, Counselors? So I think at this time, we need a motion to accept the amendment.
Yeah, you can do it, accept the amendments that I've read. And then if you want to change it to zoning board instead of planning board, you can do that now as well.
So what do you want to?
I was thinking that, you know, in some cases, we can add both of those, you know, like something that has to do with drastic changes, I think we can, we can actually ask those, both of those, those boards to kind of look into certain things, not everything.
So I'm just going to comment on that, because I attend a lot of their meetings, and I'd hate to see somebody get bounced back and forth because the boards don't know what their job is, and that's happened. So I think we need to be clear, and I think the boards expect that from us.
One or the other, right?
One or the other, for now. And then I believe if it's not working, then we come back.
I would say leave it as is for now, and then we, we'll come back and tweak it if we need to.
Okay, sounds good.
And I will, this, I find this interesting, and I will give you guys a report on what has, in your ordinances, what do you typically send to planning, what do you typically send to ZBA, what each default would be? Because I do think you need something comprehensive. It shouldn't be like, because you care about your board makeup, your board should just function from here on out. Your ordinances should be, hopefully, a little bit more demanding and controlling. You should be telling the ZBA what they should be doing, you should be telling the planning board what they should be doing. So I'll try and get you that before your next meeting, so you have that for background.
I think that's really important, thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Perfect.
I want to make a motion to accept the amendment as presented to us.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to accept the amendments as proposed to us. All those in favor? All those opposed? The amendments pass.
So now we vote on the item itself?
Favorably as amended.
Yeah, you need to make a-
Yes, so now we need a motion. Is that in the form of a motion, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion's been made.
And on the motion, just for a minute.
Sure.
On August 27th, Mr. May sent out an email about the need for a comprehensive study for, the need for senior residential housing, and a number of us responded, including the executive director of the Council on Aging. So I would like to ask if, if there's any objection, if these messages be incorporated into the record as if read by me, instead of having me read them and waste the time, and that we, and that we include the fact that we recommend that a comprehensive study be done. Are any, any objection or?
Any objections? Okay.
All right, I'll give this to the clerk so that she can-
Thank you, to include them in the ordinance.
Incorporate that as if read. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just like to recognize also that the study was requested before we made the changes that we did.
Yes.
And it's always great to do studies, but at the same time, they take a long time and sometimes they fizzle out, so I just, I wouldn't want to hold anything up.
If it comes back and it needs tweaking, we'll tweak it again.
We'll work on it, perfect. So a motion was made and properly seconded to accept the ordinance as amended. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ordinance passes as amended. Madam clerk, when you're ready.
Item number two, ordinance, amendment to the zoning map for parcel IDs identified, that the zoning map be amended to reflect parcel ID 133-002, 133-003, 175-160, from R1 current to R5 zone. And just to clarify, if the first ordinance passes, those parcels would have the benefit of this newly created R5 plus the R1 zone.
Thank you. Counselors?
Madam Chair, I'm going to, there'll be additional parcels, I'm sure, as we go forward. I'm going to make a motion to favorably recommend those parcels, those parcels identified as submitted for discussion this evening.
Okay. Motion's been made and properly seconded to accept the parcels that have been submitted this evening.
Report favorable, Counselor Farwell, second.
Did you?
No, I mean, essentially, these were parcels identified through the planning board and discussions for, that they would be suitable for senior residential, and so that's why we proposed them to, to identify these parcels as a map change from the R1 to the R5. But I appreciate the favorable recommendation on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. So motion was made to recommend this ordinance favorable to accept these parcels. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ordinance passes. Thank you. Any other questions, Counselors, comments, anything?
Good job.
Okay. With no further business before us this evening, the meeting is adjourned.